All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and those who wish to participate are invited to stand, face the flag, remove any hats, and place their right hand over their heart. Participation is voluntary and respectfully welcomed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start with recognitions, we'd like to just take a moment. During our closed session, we accepted with regrets the retirement of Selly Telma. We would like to thank her for 16 years of service to education and wish her all the best. All right, recognitions?
Yeah, tonight, we're going to recognize the Beta National Winners that will come forward. The Board of Education proudly recognizes Alexander Bowe, a current seventh grader, for earning fourth place in sixth grade math at the National Beta Convention held this summer in Orlando, Florida. He also represented RMS as part of the Junior Beta Robotics Team, which qualified for Nationals. We also commend Kenzie Baylor, now in the sixth grade, for placing eighth nationally in fifth grade Language Arts and competing as part of the Elementary Beta Book Battle Team.
You can take photos.
Ms. Benyer, do you want to have anything you'd like to say?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're super proud of them. We get one more year with Kenzie at the middle school. Can't wait to see what she accomplishes this year. And we've given Alex over to the junior high Beta Team, so we'll get to see more great things from him as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation to the board. Seeing none, moving on to public comments and presentations on the agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Seeing none, moving on to consent agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the RALLA Board of Education as means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education but require a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason. Normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. Tonight, we have items A through E. Is there anything that needs to be called out? Dr. Dare?
So, any questions?
If you have any questions. If not, can I get a motion then to approve the consent agenda items A through E?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion's been passed. Moving on now to old business, looking at the long-range facility update by Dr. Fulton.
So, no presentation this evening. The pictures look like they did before, so we don't have anything there, but a little few updates on... And this is, I'm just going to put all, now I need to put one. So, let's talk about the high school football field. It is out for bid, and so is early childhood. They do have bids coming back on early childhood on the 7th, but the problem is, is that we really, for all of us, we want it to come back about the same time as the early childhood building.
Bids coming back on the field.
Bids coming back on the field on the 7th, yes. But we would like to be able to have you look at everything at one time, that it is, you know, for the money purposes and things that are there, so you can see it all. With that, early childhood is due back on the 21st. We would like to have a special session at some point the next week, 28th, 29th, or 30th.
Can you look at our calendars?
Yeah, let's go ahead and you'll be gone. 28th or 30th would work better for me.
Either works for me.
Yeah.
I'm good with any.
All right.
What did you say?
Either the 28th or the 30th.
Okay.
Probably the 28th.
28th works good for me.
Yeah, just because we're getting close to the end of...
28th?
28th, okay.
I will, I will pose that with the architects. If not, I'll let you know. We'll have all of Amy send you an email as far as that date goes, but I will ask them...
So, they'll be here to help us understand?
They, he will be here. That's why I need to double check with him. He did say the 28th works. He would prefer the 29th, but the 28th does work for him. So, I will confirm that with him and have Amy send you an email.
Okay.
The Mark Twain elem... Nope, that's in the tornado. Okay. So, that's all for long-range facilities there.
Okay, next.
So, let's talk about the tornado. Mark Twain drawings will be going out for issue on the 11th with pre-bid on the 19th and due back on December 2nd. So, just know those dates are up and coming. On the roof at Wyman and Middle School, they are starting the gutters Monday at Wyman.
Great.
So, then they'll follow up with Middle School after that. And then Crane Day to get all the HVAC units on the building is the 24th. So, we're making progress there.
We'll get our air conditioners back in time to leave.
For winter.
Actually, we need them for heat. We need them for heat. So, yeah, we'll need them for heat. So, get all of those put back in hopefully, hopefully soon. They'll be working up there very quickly. You should see some progress soon.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Fulton. Next is our quarterly CSIP update with Dr. Dare.
Been a little while since we talked big picture about the CSIP plan, but I want to start out by just kind of reminding you that we, everything we do is centered around our CSIP plan. So, you've heard a lot of this information. I'm not going to repeat things that we've already said, and I'm also going to try very hard not to say things that you're going to hear here in a few minutes from Dr. Welch or things that you're going to hear in a month or so from the building principals. So, kind of think of this as high-level, big-picture, just kind of a wrap-up of some of the things that we've done, some of the things that we are doing, and then also some of the things that we have coming up. So, just as a reminder, our continuous school improvement plan is part of our Missouri School Improvement Process. That is basically the overarching regulations from the state for our accreditation, just to put it simply. So, our plan, it is a local plan. We're able to structure that, let me rephrase that. We have some structural things that we have to do to meet the state requirements, but the content of the plan is really up to us. It's what we want our local district to be better with. So, we have four big buckets or gears, if you would, teaching and learning, climate culture, leadership, and support systems. And we've, are always careful as we're talking about this that none of those stand alone. So, it's almost, it's sometimes hard to segregate things into those buckets because things are so interconnected and tied together. So, that does get to be a little tricky sometimes. But setting all of the logistics aside and all the state requirements and all the things, the real reason for our CSIP is so that we have some direction and consistency and we know what our priorities are. That's the real meat and the potatoes of it, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. So, again, this will be a high level. I am going to do a quick review of each of these four, just kind of talk about some of the things that we've done, remind you of some things that you've already heard. I use the word highlights there. That's probably the best word for it. And then we'll talk about some next steps, some changes that Desi has made for the next round, and then what to expect from your building presentations coming up. So, teaching and learning, obviously, we all have a role in this, but Dr. Welch does a great job leading this work, and there's a lot of work in this area, of course, as you can imagine. But some of the high points from our plan, that curriculum development revision and implementation, that's an ongoing thing. That never stops. We're always in looking at what we need to do, how are our kids doing on their assessments? Where do we have holes? A lot of things play into that as kids with mobility coming in, how do we figure out where they are, what have they missed, what do we need to address with those students? So, it's a never-ending cycle, and our teachers do a great job of understanding that. And I think there's an innate thing of being a teacher that you always want to be better, and so that's kind of what drives that whole process. I put literacy plan up there. Dr. Welch would tell you the amount of things that have gone into the legal requirements, state law requirements around our reading success plans and the literacy planning for the elementary kids. She's presented to you on that multiple times. There's more coming. As that, as our students move up in grade level, there will be more and more things added on and more and more requirements with that. So, that's been a big piece of this last couple, of this last couple of years and with more to come there. You've heard her talk to you multiple times about our screening tools and intervention tools. STAR testing is one of the bigger ones that we use for local assessments in trying to figure out where kids are and what we need to do. Professional development, training, and support. So, once we figure out what we need to do, it's getting it done. So, we've been very fortunate, and we appreciate so much you allowing us to expand our instructional coach model with our technology instructional people and our math and reading coaches to be able to help our teachers with that. Dr. Welch got us signed up with Go CSD. You've heard her talk about that. The Greater Ozarks cooperating school districts. I have to think about that. It's basically a consortium of schools in the southwest Missouri area, and it's really about bringing all of our people together to learn from each other. We have amazing people. Other districts have amazing people. We don't have to recreate the wheel. We can learn from our amazing people and share resources and figure things out together. So, that's been a great tool. We've had several staff participate in some of those workshops, and I think that will continue to grow. Wanted to mention Elevate. We used to call it Launch. It was kind of a professional development day that was led by our staff. It was in technology-based before. We've expanded that and are just kind of doing needs-based. So, you know, what are the needs? What instructional tools do we have to share? What are teachers finding success in that they can share with their colleagues? And so, that's been very popular and very well-received, those changes. So, we do that. Last year, we did that in April. The teacher said that was a little late, and they like getting ideas and being able to do something with them. So, we're doing that in February this year. So, you'll hear more about that when time comes around. Success-ready students fits into this piece. It's not just about math and English, right? It's attendance, it's graduation rates, it's career technical education participation, it's advanced placement participation. There's a myriad of optics and metrics that we use to measure, and that's what you're going to hear from your, from your principals' presentations. They'll get into those, that data detail piece and a deeper dive for you, so I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead of them for that. And same with the testing data. Dr. Welch is going to present some of that to you over the course of the next couple meetings, so I won't get into the details on all that. But we do monitor those things on an ongoing basis, and they are the forefront of our plans. Early childhood, of course, fits into this, and you've heard a lot about that and more to come, obviously. I put some red arrows on here of some things that we've talked about and some things we still think we need to figure out that we haven't got a magic hand on yet, and that's for this area, really, I think it comes down to this data dashboard piece. We have a lot of data, and it's in a lot of different sources and a lot of different... It looks different. I lost my words there, sorry. But trying to find a tool that can bring all of that together and help us organize that a little bit is proving to be a little difficult. There are some great tools out there. Some of them are just more expensive than we think we want to commit for what we would get out of it. Some of them are very in-depth and require a lot of management, and we've talked to other school districts that are hiring people just to manage their data, and that feels weird as well. So, we're trying to explore some other things. We've got some, a couple of other presentations scheduled with some companies and some, some things some schools have shared with us to chase. So, we're still working on that piece. That's a, that's one we have not figured out a good plan for yet. Climate and culture. Dr. Fulton leads the committee work on this, and so you've heard from her about the surveys and the processes. It's not just about giving the survey, it's what do we do with that data when we get it back? How do we analyze that and set the priorities? Gina fits into this role a lot with her communication strategies and how we're engaging our community. The Citizens Academy is a great example of that, just another way to try to educate people and get some more information out, answer questions, and have two-way conversation. It's easy enough for us to put stuff out, but we want to be able to hear from people as well. The recognition program, I'll share with you some of our most valuable Bulldog recipients from September in my report later, but Dr. Folch, Dr. Fulton and Dr., Dr. Fulton and Gina have worked hard on that program. I'm struggling tonight, I'm so sorry. Trying to give them credit and can't even get their name right, that's terrible. But just getting some recognitions out there, we have a lot of people who do a lot of great things and trying to make sure that they understand that we see them and that the community sees them do those things as well. So, there's a lot of things that fit into this. The Parent Square app, you know, we've talked about that quite a bit, and that seems to be really well-received. Entrado's our emergency communications piece. We're having a little bit of issues there. What happens in the tech world is companies start, they exist, they get bought out, they exist, they get bought out, they exist, they get bought out, and then somewhere along the way, somebody goes, eh, we're not going to make that any better. And as they don't make it better, it starts to die, and, and that's what's happening with, with that tool, is it's, we're losing our support levels, and so we're not sure how much longer that's going to be a sustainable piece for us. So, let's see, what else? Fitting into this, that climate culture piece, again, much appreciation. We've talked about this before, but being able to contract with our board-certified behavior analysts. We have some paraprofessionals who've gone through RBT training, registered behavior technicians, trying to help with some of those things. Ashley Grisham is our school youth community liaison, has been phenomenal in trying to provide... We don't have to provide everything to everybody, but she can tell them where they can go get it. So, if we can meet some of those basic needs, just help people find those resources, and the ultimate goal of just getting the kid to school. If we can get them here, we can do a lot with them. So, she does a lot in chasing down attendance pieces and trying to help get kids to school. Couple of things for this one that we are working on. We send the surveys out, we don't get great participation. I think that's pretty typical, though. I think all of us are that way. We either are passionate about something and angry and we fill out a survey, or we don't take the time to fill out the survey. And so, trying to think of some ways we can do something more to get better participation from our survey processes so we hear from more people. And then we have this Portrait of a Learner process starting. Dr. Welch is leading that process for us. That will tie into our mission and vision, kind of our overarching thing. Just to oversimplify that, it's just what do we want a kid that graduates from RALLA High School, from preschool all the way through? What does that look like? What do we want them to be prepared to do? What do we want them to, to know and demonstrate as a person by the time they graduate? So, getting into, you know, their academics, but also those soft skills. We want them to be able to communicate. We want them to be able to function. We want them to be able to show up to work and be a contributing person. So, there's a lot of committee work that goes into that. She's got a committee going. There's community representatives and parents and staff and all kinds of things participating in that. So, that'll be a lot of, a lot of things happening this year in that regard. Leadership, and this is, I always preface this by saying this is us as administrators, you as board members, but, but we like to think of our teachers as leaders and our support staff as leaders as well. Everybody's leading always because everybody's watching always. So, we want to make sure everybody understands their role in being a leader in the district. It's centered around our CSIP and then the building school improvement plan work, and so you'll, you'll hear more about that from the districts or from the buildings as well. Those supporting plans, you get to see all of those. So, we're talking about our technology plan, our communications plan, professional development plan, the assessment plan that you're going to see here in a little bit, long-range facility plan that Dr. Fulton does, all those pieces. So, all of that ties in. Our goal over this past couple of years has been more collaboration and consistency, and I think we're starting to see some benefits of that. We're starting to see that happening artificially, which is the goal. We can lead that all day long, but when it starts to happen without our direct input is the best thing that can happen there. So, especially between buildings. It's, it's, RALLA's not that big of a town, but Truman and Wyman might as well be an ocean apart, right? So, trying to make sure that we're being consistent because our kids do move between buildings, and we do want all of our fourth graders, when they go to the middle school, to be prepared in the same way. So, wanting consistency there. We have started our leadership development program, so we have our first group coming in at the end of the month to start their year with us. We have a good mix of folks, elementary and high school age, all the way through, and that's our, our teachers within our buildings that, that want to be leaders in some form or fashion, not necessarily administrators, although I think most of them are probably looking at that path. But we painted this for them that we can, we can help them if they just want to develop some leadership skills and kind of know the bigger picture going forward, so. Kind of our, our red flag on this, this section is just continuing forward and making sure all of our plans are comprehensive and linked together. We still have a little bit of cleanup to do and just making sure everything aligns well in our evaluation processes. We've got a good start with our teacher processes. We've made some changes to our support staff things. We still have some things to do with our administrative staff and just cleaning up some of those evaluation processes, so. Okay. Support systems, there's a lot to this, so basically everything else that doesn't fit into those other three categories, but safety and security is, again, intertwined in everything we do. You've heard a lot from Dr. Fulton over these past few months about door access control, window film, those pieces, and those are important, but we also stress the number one thing we can do for safety and security is relationships. We need a kid to have a trusting adult that they can go to and report things and make sure that we know what's going on. So, it's more than just the physical pieces. We, we want to make sure we're allowing the environment where the kids feel safe to be here and have someone they can talk to. Mrs. Atkinson does a great job with our financial planning. We've talked a lot about efficiencies and looking at the things that we're doing. She's knee-deep in trying to get some things formalized to make some of our automated processes a little simpler, hopefully, at least more direct and maybe save some time in the processes, so. A lot happening there. Program evaluations, those appear in your packets periodically. We still want to do some more with that. I think we're doing a little better job of capturing some things, but we want to formalize that a little better, so there's some work to do there. But it is good that we're having the conversation, so all of our program leaders are having to think through, you know, what does their program look like and what are their strengths and opportunities coming with those. I think our staffing has been trending in the, definitely in the right direction. If you look back at our, our turnover rates and things in the post-COVID, immediate post-COVID times versus now, it's significantly different, I think in large part due to the levy and the support that we receive from the community there, and, and again, circling back to culture and climate and those kind of things. It's just, I think a lot of those things are starting to click together, and people are staying, which is a good thing. Our applicant pools are getting bigger and giving us a better options to, to keep people as well. Our biggest challenge in this area is kind of the same across the board, is it's just ever-changing. There's an ever-changing landscape of financial things, safety and security needs, program needs, staffing challenges, all those kind of things. So, this probably is one of the areas that, that we're impacted from outside changes as well. All the legal changes that happened this year around cell phones and those types of things impact us in some form or fashion, so always trying to keep up with that stuff. As we go, this is the first year of the second cycle for Desi's review of the CSIP processes, so we were, I guess, fortunate in some ways to be drawn into the second year of the second cycle, so our review is not this year, it'll be next year. But the focus for this round is on the fidelity piece. So, breaking that down, as we're looking at our school improvement plans, and this is what we've asked the buildings to do as well, determining what we want to accomplish and how do we get there, but then did it work? Is what we said we were going to do doing what we want it to do? And so, that starts with, and I kind of highlighted this, did we do what we said we were going to do? That's the first step. And that seems like a simple thing, but it's not always. And I'm going to, I'm going to use an example here. We adopt a new curriculum series for math, there's components to that, and making sure that we provided the resources and the training and all the things that every teacher needs to make sure that they're implementing that with the, with the right success is a, is a piece that we have to make sure we're doing. And how do we analyze that data? How do we put that together so that we know if we need to do things differently? Did we see improvement? Do we need to keep doing what we're doing? Did we not see improvement? Is it an implementation dip? What do we need to do? So, that fidelity piece is a hard one to demonstrate, so the second round has a lot more narrative responses, but we do have to provide more evidence in, in proving that our CSIP plan is being used and that we are doing the evaluation processes and that. So, over the, over the next few months into the spring, we'll, as we do these updates, we'll start bringing those pieces forward as we do two things. One is changing our current CSIP plan because, quite honestly, we've accomplished a lot of those things, and we're ready to move on to the next steps. And so, what does, what do those changes need to look like? And then also, how are we measuring those and where are we getting that data from? So, this is fairly significant in, in the amount of material coming forward, but it'll be, it's a good thing. And I added this little note at the bottom. Again, it's a continuous school improvement thing, so it's a cycle. It never ends. We're never going to be done, right? So, we will always be coming back saying, okay, we did that, how do we make it better? How do we make it better? How do we make it better? That's always our goal. So, we talked about the board presentations. You're going to hear some starting tonight. Well, you've heard them for months, but you're going to hear some more starting tonight, leading into the building presentations. So, the next couple of months will be pretty heavy on some data and information, trying to break down some of these pieces. We'll get into the assessment data tonight, the APR stuff as it moves forward, assuming Desi gets some timelines figured out and gets that stuff to us. Again, as a reminder, that APR is our annual performance report. That is our accreditation report, and so we'll, we'll talk through those details. You'll get the building improvement plans. We're going to stick with the plan that we did last year, so elementary, middle school will present to you in November. Secondary schools will present in December. They're going to do that as, the elementaries and middle school will do that as a, as a group. That seemed to work well. They liked that. They appreciated that time to collaborate and work through that together as well. So, we'll continue with that process. And then, as I said, we'll lead toward those district's CSIP revisions. We would look to, to have a revised CSIP to you for the summer so that it can be in place when school starts in the fall. That was a lot of words. Questions about any of that?
Maybe just a comment on one. It seems like with the buildings coming and presenting together that they're learning a lot from each other.
I think so.
And I think that's something that we didn't have in the past. It felt like there was a lot of disconnect and each were doing kind of their own thing, so it's nice to see that they're, they're collaborating and...
Yeah. They enjoyed it too, really. They, they would give you that same feedback, yeah. Okay? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business, looking at the emergency operations plan with Dr. Fulton.
We have, this is the first time that we will bring this plan to you, but I want to point out to you, we've had a plan forever, so just know that. So, first of all, this plan is the product of the work of our safety committee, which has a lot of members. I thank them for their time and their efforts and their concern and their leadership in their own buildings and dealing with, with all things safety in what they do. So, again, as I said, we have always had a plan. It was called the Crisis Plan back in the day. It lived in a red binder in all of the rooms that is still there. We distribute this in multiple ways, paper and electronically in Entrado, and it's also digital. And it's also digital for our principals to find and share. The schools use the district plan to create their specific plans for their buildings, and this is a living document. I would like to say before I get much further, you will not see this document today. It is private. It is one in which we don't want to share all of our plans with how it goes in the public. So just know that upfront. So. And then the schools create a more specific plan that will deal with what they have to do. Why are we bringing this to you today? Thanks to Senate Bill 68, Missouri statute 160480. It requires that the Board of Education of each school district and the governing board of each charter school shall adopt a comprehensive emergency operations plan that addresses school safety, crisis and emergency operations, prevention, preparation, operations and follow-up, collaboration with local law enforcement, providers of fire protection services and emergency management, and supporting consideration of supporting mental health needs of all involved in any crisis. So our plan is comprehensive. It does include all of those items. Our plan has been approved, by the way, by Ralla Police Department, Ralla Fire Department, Brad Woods for the emergency management, as well as Missouri S and T has provided input in it as well. Our plan should be shared with local law enforcement. Not only did I share them, I asked for input prior to that, providers of fire protection and emergency management, as well as we shall develop standards for emergency operations plans is described in subsection one, which is the very first one I gave to you or read to you off as we went through. So that is why it is coming to you because it requires you to approve it now, even though we have always had one. What does our plan include? It has a basic plan, functional annexes, hazard and threat specific annexes. So it talks about how to deal with tornadoes and fires and, you know, illnesses and accidents. And the list is huge. Along with a list of resources of the documents that we use to put this together and formal approval documents. So you will review this in closed session as we go back upstairs in a little while. Has all of the recommended areas that you, that you have, we talked about. Ralla Police Department, Fire Department and Emergency Management have reviewed the document and their recommendations were included in our plan, which luckily they did not find many revisions. And aboard, and upon Board of Education approval, this document will be shared with them in its entirety as required by the state statute. What's next for safety? This is something we review at all times. The other part of the law talks about site assessments. I'll be honest, not really, we didn't receive a lot of training on that in the school safety academy. So on the 16th, there is a company that is a specialist in doing site assessments will come down to train me and Mrs. Colby, as well as all of our SOOs at how to do site assessments. They'll be doing and modeling two for us, then we will do the rest. What we're going to use that data for, to continue to modify this plan. And also it will go into our facility planning as well, because that is a physical site assessment. So we look at the building itself. We are also providing time with our admin team to do tabletop drills with our police department. We did that at our last admin meeting. We're going to talk about safety as we go through at every admin meeting. And then we are going to do a reunification drill. We're not sure how we're going to do that because it's really hard, but we're going to put adults in there and we're going to practice the procedures of how to do that. Because that's an important part of something that we don't practice. It's hard with kids. How do you do that? So we're going to take a group of adults and make them be kids and have our unification drill. So we're going to be planning that. Questions?
When you have updates to the plan, do we have to approve those also?
You will approve the plan yearly.
Yearly, but if you have.
If I have something in between times, I will bring it back to you. If it is something that is crucial that we have to put in right away. Other than that, we will approve it, I put in August of every year, right before the school year starts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a giant document for sure.
It is. It, it is giant, but it is all encompassing. And I will tell you, our plan will meet, I, I suspect 99% sure that it will meet the requirements that Desi's going to set forth with us. So I have worked with MSBA to do a lot of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Staffy.
There we go. Okay. So I come to you this evening. We have had some increased needs in our special education department at Mark Twain. So we are in need of a paraprofessional to meet the students' needs within financial impact of about, with salary benefits of about a little over $25,000. We're going to try something new this year. With those, with those IEP needs also comes at Mark Twain, a large census of health needs. So our nurse is extremely busy and some of those IEP needs also require our nurse to be available at all times. And so with that, we are going to try to put in a position of a paraprofessional slash health aide to do things like call parents, to help sit there while the nurse goes in and has to go out to a classroom, to work with them and, you know, we'll take this to go, go get this kid from this classroom, go take this for a diabetic child, a child. All those different things. And so they are a bit overwhelmed at Mark Twain. We're going to attempt to put a paratite position in there. Our Director of Nursing, Nurse Wanica, has been working with this. So we are.
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask you, will this person have some training, some nursing, medical background?
We would like something like that. If we don't, it is a position that we can train. So we're doing simple things like maybe take that student's temperature. They will not administer medicine. They will not administer medical care, but they could do those other pieces. Do the running, sit with the child if they're waiting for a parent to come in if, if they're sick. You know, if they're throwing up, they can sit with them. So the nurse can go deal with the actual medical issue itself. This is something we're trying. It is definitely a need. We, finding nurses is very hard for us. We were looking and still have posted a halftime nurse with zero applicants right now.
Were you looking for just RNs? Or were you also looking for LPNs?
It was RN, LPN, CNAs. We post CNA. We have posted all of the above. So we're going to try this to actually grow someone that might be able to fit in this role. If this doesn't work and the need is not there, we could transition them into a classroom as a paraprofessional if they want after the year. And if the need stays, then we would obviously keep it. But it's going to be a paraprofessional on a paraprofessional scale. And we have a bus, we, we have five special needs bus routes. And in that, we are in need of, of one bus has needs, needs two paras. So has a very large load. So we are in need of that. That is hour and a half, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon with a budget impact of about $12,000. Action needed tonight for this is the approval for one special ed paraprofessional at Mark Twain, one paraprofessional CNA health aide at Mark Twain, and one special ed bus aide.
And some of that comes back to us in reimbursement?
It, um.
Nope.
No, it is not ECSE. No.
Special education. I'm surprised that with special education that there wouldn't be some sort of.
Because it's not early childhood. Is that why?
Right. We, we get 100% of our early childhood reimbursement, but for special education, we, we far exceed what federal dollars we get there.
Correct.
Okay.
Makes sense. All right. Then can we get a motion to approve then a special education paraprofessional at Mark Twain, a paraprofessional CNA health aide in the Mark Twain nurse's office and a special education bus aide?
I'm going to make a motion.
We approve the sped professional, paraprofessional at Mark Twain and the health aide at Mark Twain and the sped bus aide.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It's been approved?
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to transportation, job descriptions, action.
So Mr. Clark recently became our transportation director whenever Mr. Harper left us. And something we have been working with him on is how to grow the capacity of leadership within that department. We have a lot of talented people over there. And what we have been doing, let me read the objective first, is to strengthen the operations to cultivate the leadership capacity within the transportation department. We are restructuring roles and responsibilities. This reorganization will ensure a clear division of duties, streamline workflow, improve employee retention and provide targeted leadership opportunities within key areas of service. What we currently have been doing is a director and assistant director. That job is vast. Both our director and assistant director worked almost every day last year, over 12 hours a day. It is, it's just huge. Our assistant director was always on a bus or always in need. It is just, it's a large amount of time. And so with Mr. Clark's guidance, he would like to restructure the leadership of that department. He would, he as the director would have three people reporting directly to him. We would call one, the operations and logistics manager, the fleet service manager and driver support and safety compliance manager. And before you get too far, I will explain each role.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Operations and logistics manager. That is a person who is in charge of all of our routing, all of our software, including scheduling all bus trips, training of office staff, including our schools, and training of the drivers. All of our drivers this year have a tablet on their bus. Always before, we put a sub or a bus driver on a route and we hand them a piece of paper with a map. Well, that's really hard to do in the morning in the dark. And so this year we have a tablet on there with our new program that allows them to get step-by-step directions. But that requires training. It requires training for all of our drivers because honestly, they're still struggling with that process. Tech, you know, technology is not always their thing. So we do training. We train all of our subs. So when they, we put them on a bus, we can hand them a tablet and they can go drive any route without fear of missing someone. So yes.
Do the athletic buses get it too?
Get what too?
Get a tablet for the driver.
Oh yeah, we, we can because all of our trips are ran through there as well and we have to enter the address that goes in there. So it will provide directions as well.
Great.
All of those tablets are synced up. They have a cell signal as well. So we can monitor them from afar.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really cool.
So one was to break down. You know exactly where that bus is.
Correct. Absolutely. It's, it's really slick. It's really nice. This person would also oversee all state reporting, October, February, summer school and end of year. They would communicate with building administrators, teachers, director of special ed to provide reasonable and safe and prudent transportation services and compliance with district, state and federal policies and laws. That's Leo's words. So they would be the go-between to help all of our special needs kids and, and work with process coordinators. And they would obtain driver substitutes. So that means when a driver calls in in the morning, this person would be responsible for getting a driver sub. We are requesting that this be on the mechanic pay scale and be 12 months. Questions about that position?
How does the mechanic pay scale compare to what the assistant director pay was before?
I have all of that for you.
Great. Okay. Sorry. I'll wait.
That's okay. That's okay. Driver support and safety compliance manager. So when we go visit school districts, there are lots of signs that say bus drivers needed here. We'll train you in your CDL and we will train you to be a bus driver. We need to be, so we are at that point. Last year, whenever I was there for four months, we did not have a trainer. So I couldn't add a bus driver if I wanted to. Not that we were hiring anybody in March and April, but I could not. Because you have to have someone that has driven for two year, a minimum of two years. They have to go through all of the training and we send them to school in order to get that MAPT driver trainer certification. People, before, we always trained people that had a school bus permit and then we would train them. So that means they had the permit, they had their CDL, we would train them in school bus and we would send them on. That is no longer the case. In order for us to attract and retain drivers, some of the best things we do is whenever they host a driving night at the track and they put someone behind a bus and we put drivers with them and we let them see it and what it's like and experience it. We have to train them from the ground up. That is, that is hard. That's a lot of time. So we are at the point where Matt is the one who did it last year. He trained for us more than he drove his shuttle because it's a long time to get everyone through the CDL process and the school bus endorsement. I think the custodian probably shut the doors because I think he's cleaning. That's usually what happens if I'm sitting there. So, so, so anyway, so that's what we do. So we want to improve that program and we want to maintain a, a robust driver recruitment and retraining program. We are always in the need of substitute drivers. We are always in the need of trip drivers. So we want this person to focus on that recruitment, focus on the safety. When I talk about safety, they will plan all of the safety days with our schools because in elementaries, we do safety days with them. They will also work with the director to plan all of the safety training that we are required to do with them. And one thing I noticed when I was there is that brand new drivers are said, here you go. You go drive. That's not a lot of support. So we train, all of our new teachers have a mentor. They come in. That was always my dream. This person would be that mentor type person to say, what do you need? Do, do the check-ins? How can I help you? If you're having trouble with kids on your bus, who do you go to? This would be the go-to person. This person would also call subs. They would split the time with the other person as well. Question about that position?
Okay. With it being a 225 day schedule, that they would not be working in the summer?
Yes, they would.
They would be?
We, we could monitor that time around.
Okay.
Because the summer will need to be our biggest time.
Training. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So probably time off maybe in June, but we would need them back in, in July to train. So we are ready to go for school starts. Fleet service manager. This is not a new position. This is just an update to the job description. This is our head mechanic. We want him to be the fleet service manager. Updated his job description to meet what we currently do. Those job descriptions have not been updated for many, many years. The mechanic job description. We, he updated that job description as well to meet the current needs of what we do. There's really nothing magical to say on these. I'm sorry. Assistant mechanic. So right now we have an employee that is a bus washer, but it is paid under the assistant mechanic's scale. He has worked with us for five years. He is very capable of doing mechanic work, but his major role is bus washing. That is a, a big part of what we do is maintaining our buses. We would like to, we are in the need for an assistant mechanic. And why? Our fleet is increasing. We increased by three buses this year. Two of the three that you approved last year have come in. We're still waiting on one. But that will get us, put us at 67 buses. Next year, we are looking at additional four buses and, and leasing five ECSE buses, which could put our fleet at 76 buses. Our buses have age on them. They are not all new, as you know. I mean, only two of those are sitting in our, in our lot right now are new and it was in the shop the other day. So, and those are just working out some bugs and different things. But our bays are full at all times. Two mechanics are having a hard time managing what we, what we have. So we are in need of a third person to help with, with our fleet. And that includes our white fleet. And that our white fleet, whenever I say that, that's a term. It is every other thing that's not yellow and big and transport students. So. I had to learn that. It was a new term. I'm like, white fleet and they're all white. I'm like, okay. So.
Heard that one.
Anyway, so with increased bus age, increased bus issues is a requirement of more mechanics needs. So when you talk about the budget impact, there is a little bit. So when, if we move and go to a driver trainer with the person that we have in staff, we have to have another driver. That's really the difference. And a driver is about $20,000 a year. So we're looking at current salaries for all of those people involved. That includes your secretaries and everyone of about $432,000. With the proposed changes in salaries, we're looking at four, about $450,000. So to, to, to increase our leadership capacity and provide support to our drivers, we're looking at about $17,000, which actually comes in to be less than a driver cost to make these changes. So if you thought the last one was really confusing when I asked you for action, here we go.
My goodness.
Here we go.
Wow.
Yeah.
Did you have to go to Lucas for this?
No. I know. Absolutely not.
The words, right?
No, no, didn't go, didn't go to Lucas for this. So. Number one, we would like to put in the operations and logistics manager position. That is in lieu of our assistant director. We would no longer have an assistant director. But keep in mind, those assistant director duties have been divided amongst the other people. We would like to put an assistant mechanic in with, with starting in a salary schedule at step five. We have an assistant mechanic's schedule, but it includes a lot of things. But at 1586, we are not going to attract a mechanic at that rate. So we'd like to start them at step five and then of course, provide years of service. We would like to create the driver support and safety compliance manager position in order to attract, recruit and keep our drivers and provide that mentoring to them as well. We would like to update the title of the head mechanic to a fleet service manager and update. update the job description and then update the job description of the mechanic. That's the action I need this evening.
Will they also, you know, say one of the new assistants, one of those three, one's out? Are they new, are they trained, cross-trained?
They are.
So that they can cover each other?
To some extent.
Yeah, but I, I think for the operations part, yes.
Yes. To go in and be the mechanic, no.
Right.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, each of them will have pieces that will be kind of specific, but for daily operations pieces, it gives them four people instead of two.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it gives them a team to work on. Now, it's going to be a transition for our, for our transportation department and our drivers of learning who to go to and when. But Leo is very confident they, they can do that and figure that out.
I think adding manager to those titles, that will entice some people to apply.
Absolutely.
All right, so can we get a motion to approve changes to the transportation department's staffing structure, including the addition of new positions?
I make a motion that we approve the following positions, including job description and pay schedules for operations logistics, assistant mechanic, driver support and safety, and title change for head mechanic, and the mechanic updated job description.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a really good idea.
It does.
Yeah.
Yes. It does. Sounds like a really good idea.
Next up.
Did this come from maybe another?
This is Mr. Clark.
Just Leo kind of thinking about what they name.
He did. Very good. Hello, Dr. Welch, how are you?
Frozen. Thank you.
We got a memo ahead of time.
I hope I can use my frozen fingers to push the button.
All right, let's talk about achievement data.
All right, well, good evening. We'll get started. We've got a couple of topics here to discuss. The first one is student achievement. So some of this data has been trickling in since the summer and comes in sort of a preliminary format. We received that first from, directly from our vendor, which is DRC, and then that goes to the state of Missouri, DESI, and they're able to kind of clean that data up and report that information back to us in regards to how it will be used to calculate our APR scores, which we should be receiving hopefully within the next month or so. Fingers crossed, hold your breath, crush your legs, whatever you gotta do. But the data that we'll look at tonight, obviously, in our assessment plan, which you'll be approving later, we give a lot of assessments in the district for different purposes. For the purpose of this presentation tonight, we're just going to specifically look at our required statewide assessments, which is MAP. In the MAP program, we have two different things that you commonly will hear about and that we're going to review tonight. The first one are grade level assessments, which the acronym there is GLA. That includes our grades three through eight, ELA and math. All students take that assessment each year. And then at fifth grade and eighth grade, those students take an additional science assessment. And then when students get to high school, they are required to take these four end-of-course assessments. So that can happen, of course, at any point during their high school planning. Just kind of depends on what their pathway looks like and when they might encounter that content. And so they have to take those assessments at some point. So the first thing that I have here this evening, I just kind of created this chart for you all. This is looking at kind of our overview of student achievement, and this is at the district level. So I'm not breaking it down by a grade level here. This is all students that would have taken assessment in that year. And the score that's used here is the performance, the MAP performance index, which is also referred to as MPI. And essentially, that MPI score, it just measures our students' performance on those MAP tests. And the MPI is essentially, it's just a composite score that's calculated by summing all of the points for each of the student's achievement level. So you'll remember, our students receive a score and it's given a criteria, it makes a criteria of being below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced. And then we divide that by the total number of students that are in the group and we multiply that by 100 to get that MPI score. Okay? So this is looking at all district students that would have taken that assessment and the MPI score that we received as a district for that content area. And essentially, this is just kind of showing you some trends over time. The ELA content is represented by that blue line, which you can see that we've made some kind of steady gains there since COVID, although I would say those last three years, they've been pretty comparable in terms of growth. Nothing significant there. But again, kind of returning to that pre-COVID levels that we are used to seeing. One of the things that I wanted to mention here, this is certainly a celebration for RALA public schools. Our literacy scores are our strongest of all four of the core content areas. But we have put a lot of effort into literacy over the last couple of years. This past year was our first year of implementation using new resources and we have spent a lot of time meeting with small teams and working on developing a written curriculum, creating common assessments. So last year was our first year of implementation with those materials and all of those processes. So I'm hopeful as we continue down that pathway in our kind of six-year adoption cycle, that we'll see those numbers start to increase. We have held study on our APR report as being on track for student achievement in the area of ELA based on this MPI score. Okay? Science and social studies, they have fewer data points. So remember, fifth and eighth grade and biology for science, and we have one time that we take a social studies assessment, and that's in high school. So anytime that you've got, you know, fewer students that are participating, those scores tend to fluctuate because just of your standard error of measurement. So depending upon who the kids are that take that assessment in that year, you may see more of a greater fluctuation, which is what I would account a lot of, like, social studies in particular, too. I will say that team has been working very hard this past year to make some changes. And when, they're the only EOC that takes that assessment multiple times because it's offered in summer session, it's offered as a semester course in the fall, and a semester course in the spring. So we have an end-of-course that's given three times throughout a year, whereas bio, algebra I, and English II are given once. And so as I look at those scores, again, it's different groups of students, but certainly we saw some improvements in that spring semester after they had some, made some changes. So I'm hopeful we'll see that data continue to trend in that way. And then math is represented by the red line. Obviously, this continues to be our greatest area of opportunity for improvement. I've said that, I think, every time I talk about our student data. This is no surprise. But it is nice to see that we have continued to make steady gains, probably the most growth, obviously, there since COVID. And we have certainly done some effort around math. It's not that we haven't been doing that, but we will be this year, starting that same process that we've done with literacy. So this is our year to review, select a new resource, implement next year. And so we'll follow a similar process that we've done with literacy and really start to dive in. I think I mentioned to you a few meetings ago that we have even begun to do some PD this year, just to help teachers understand, we need to make some shifts in the way that we instruct in math. And so how do we prepare their thinking for that and give them some tools and research to be able to use as we start that process of reviewing materials and selecting something Okay, this particular chart is comparing the proficiency of RALA students to students across the state. You see this every year. This is by grade level, and so we can kind of just see overall how our students are progressing. The thing here with proficiency, as I mentioned, we have those four levels, below basic, basic, proficiency, and advanced. When we talk about proficiency, we're adding the, the scores of students that are in those top two categories. So that's what we're considering proficiency. So with the exception of English II, our students do score at or above the state average at all grade levels based on this past year. So again, ELA is definitely a place where we celebrate.
Is English II, is that usually sophomores?
Yeah.
Generally?
Yeah. Generally speaking, yes. Most all students. It's probably the most consistent in terms of where students would take that assessment of the four EOCs.
Right.
Yeah. Math comparison here, again, same information, with the exception of sixth grade and our algebra students. Again, our students scored at or above the state proficiency level. I will just point out that particular cohort at sixth grade, this was the exact same statement last year. So they were fifth graders last year. They were the only group, with the exception of high school algebra students, who scored below the state average in the area of math in our district. Okay, science, again, here, with the exception of the high school assessment, biology I, our local proficiency scores were above the state average. And again, similar statement for the high school students. In that government assessment, we were below the state average.
Question?
Yeah.
In biology, are, they still doing common tests among the teachers that teach it?
Yes.
That do common?
Yep, we have common assessments for those core content areas. Yeah, and that team works really hard. I would say they do an exceptional job of connecting together and talking through that, looking at their data, making decisions about how that data drives their instruction. So yes, they definitely use that in their data day instructional planning.
Little bit easier when they're in the same building.
Yes.
Because they used to be, we used to be in two different buildings.
It is. Yes, that team works very well together in that way.
Dr. Welch?
Yeah.
You, before you leave social studies, you were talking about analyzing whether or not to continue offering the course during the summer?
Yes.
Because of the testing results, so did they come to a conclusion?
Yes. So we gave them the opportunity last year to kind of look at some changes in doing those things, just in thinking about the data that we saw from last year from those three different times that we gave the assessment. I would say that those scores have improved, so we're giving them the opportunity to continue to look at that. By making that change, it impacts a lot of other things in regards to the offerings and the way we would do summer school, but also in the regular year. So we're continuing another year to look at that and watch, but that team is very aware that that could be a change that we make. Yep. And it would take some planning on our part as well, just because kids have pathways that they've planned out. And so we want to make sure that if we make that change, we're communicating it in plenty of time for people to make adjustments to their courses and when they would like to take those things, at which, you know, opportunity. Okay, so with all of this data, it's a, this is a very small portion of what I've shared with you. We share with our teams. We have lots of spreadsheets where we track this data, a lot of reports that we can run that come directly from DRC, which is our, our vendor platform, where we take those assessments, as well as data that we receive from DESI and reports that we run there. We are taking opportunity as a team internally to really dive into all of that data. It is a one-time assessment, so it's one piece of data that helps inform our decisions. It's not the only thing that informs our decisions. But we do get that data back based on essentially domains or content strands. And so we're able to look at our, our data in that way, big picture, and think about what are some strengths and then opportunities of improvement that we have. Our instructional coaches have really been helpful in this process. They, too, like to sit down with me and kind of, we dig into that data and try to make some determinations in regards to what we're seeing. But they have also been going into the buildings and helping to facilitate meetings with small groups, sharing the data with them, guiding them through this process, helping them come to conclusions in regards to what are strengths? Why do we think those things are strengths? Are we doing something in particular where we feel like that's elevating our, our student's success in that area? Where are there places that we see that we maybe have not done as well? And why is the, you know, what's the reason for that? So they've helped to facilitate a lot of those conversations alongside principals. They will talk about some of more of what those specific things are during their building presentation, so I don't want to steal their thunder tonight, but they'll kind of get into what those strengths and opportunities are in that piece. And then we also look just very specifically at each item. So every question has a depth of knowledge tied to it. Is it a recall question, simple multiple choice? Or is it something that requires deeper thinking and, you know, critical analysis? There's different question types. Students have tech-enabled type questions, and so we look at each of those different things and analyze, how did we do on each of those different types of questions, too? And again, those help to inform some of our goals and action steps that we have in the, in the school improvement plans. We think about the content knowledge that students have, but they also have to be able to have practice all year long with those different types of questions. If they don't know how to respond to a specific technology-enhanced type and question, that can throw them off on that assessment. So we have tools that help us practice those types of things all year long. One of the things that I wanted to share with you this evening is something new that DESI rolled out second semester last year, and these are called Missouri Instructional Testlets. So you may or may not be aware, but DESI has already provided us in years past with something that's called a practice form. And so essentially, those are MAP-type questions that are no longer being used on the assessment. And so DESI releases them and puts them into one big assessment where essentially, teachers could practice the MAP test with kids ahead of time. But as you can imagine, the MAP test is sort of a, it's a big assessment. It takes multiple days. And so when you have a practice form that mirrors that, it also takes multiple days in a classroom setting to do the practice version. It's a, not exactly the easiest for teachers to navigate. It takes a lot of class time and it's, it's a lot to work through. So DESI received feedback. They heard that. They made some adjustments and they came up with this idea in regards to the Missouri Instructional Testlets. They are also released test items, so they'll no longer be used on a test moving forward, but they would mirror the type of questions that our students would see. And instead of providing that to students in one big assessment, they have split them up based on the domain and the type of standards that they're covering. So teachers then can use those at different points all through the year as a follow-up to instruction that they've provided in their classroom around those standards. And it allows them to give a MAP-like test at that point in time over those specific discrete skills that they have taught students. I rolled that out last year to our curriculum specialist in February. They were, many of them had the opportunity to, to test that out, but you'll also remember we had a tornado, so not all of them had the opportunity. That sort of was not a priority once that happened. But several of them did get in and test it. We rolled it out to all of our teachers and just let them know, sorry, the timing by which DESI released this, we didn't have any PD days that lined up. But your coaches have been trained, your curriculum specialists have been trained. If you want to use this, here's this tool, here's how you do it. And our coaches went and helped those teachers who wanted to use it. So we had several teachers who kind of jumped in last year and tried them out. At this upcoming PD day in October, we're training all of our teachers. So grades three through eight will be trained and then we'll have a separate session with our secondary teachers. Last year, when they rolled these out, they only rolled out content for grades three through eight, and they received a lot of feedback that EOC teachers would like to have the same opportunity to use testlets with their students. And so they're currently working on that with their proposed date to release those testlets at the end of November. So I'm going to go ahead and train the secondary teachers in October, but they will not have access to that content until second semester. And there's a few other details on there you're welcome to read about. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you that's specific to our statewide assessment information is that DESI is in the process right now of looking at redesigning our statewide system of assessments. The proposed name for that would be success-ready student assessment. And a lot of this is coming from some work that's happening across the district, or across the state with various districts around competency-based learning. Many of those districts have requested that DESI look at changing that assessment model. Just having one data point, one snapshot of information at the end-of-the-year summative does not always necessarily give us the best picture of student learning and student growth over time. That's been the argument for a long time. And so they're looking at creating something that would give teachers the opportunity to give through assessments throughout the year, but then also kind of an end-of-year summative assessment experience as well. In April, they brought us together to kind of give us a sneak peek in regards to what they were thinking and what that might look like. It was pretty high-level and there's a lot of questions still to be answered and things to be figured out. So, I will tell you what I'm going to share with you tonight. I am certain we'll probably change. There will be many iterations of this before it becomes final, but they are moving forward in this process. So, just at a very high level for math specifically, instead of taking that end-of-year summative assessment, there would be three different administrations throughout the year for math specifically. And the, the nice piece about the math is that we could have control over where we're choosing to assess on those specific set of standards. So, we don't have to redesign our scope and sequence or the, the way that we lay out what we teach, when we teach it. We have the control of being able to say, in fall, these are the things at third grade we would teach and we would want to assess on then. We would have to meet some basic requirements, so there would be 12 kind of assessment testlets that would be administered. You would have to give three in the fall, four in the winter, four in the spring, and then you would have that end-of-grade level performance task that all students would take again. So, again, some flexi- flexibility in when we would give those assessments, how we would cluster them together and administer those to students. They would have, there was some discussion about students having opportunities to retest per cluster. So, in the fall, if you took three of those different assessments, that would be considered a cluster. If a student took that and the teacher didn't feel like that was reflective of the student's understanding, they could, or if they just felt like they needed to reteach based on that information, they could reteach and then readminister one time to the students that needed to do so.
So, they would get immediate results?
Correct. We would get multiple sets of results, and their highest scores from those clusters would be banked. And then, each of those cluster scores together, along with the end-of-the perfor- end-of-year performance task, would create an overall math score.
So, it seems like it takes a while to get these results back. So, how is, how, how quickly are they going to be able to?
That's a great question.
Turn this data around? Any question you ask, right?
That is a great question. So, the tricky part with the time process is not necessarily how quickly we get the information back from the vendor. It's when the vendor gives that data to the state, the state then has to go in and basically do a cleanup process, because not every student's score is part of the score that we're held accountable for. So, they have to go through and remedy all that, right? Everyone's accountable to take the test, but every score is not reportable for our APR process. If you're a student that has not been in the district, like you just moved in in March, you would still take the assessment with us because you're here, but we would not be held accountable for that student's score because they have not been in our district for more than a year. If they are new to the country and they don't speak English, those assessments or scores are not held against us at that point. So, there's some students that take that assessment, but their score is not held, we're not held accountable for that. So, that's the process that takes so long to get cleaned up and for us to have, we have preliminary data within, probably, we finish our window at the end of May or mid-May. We always have our scores back in July from the vendor. And again, we're going to get little pieces of information along the way, but an overall score won't be calculated until the end of the year. So, I don't anticipate it that it would speed up that process any. We would just have smaller chunks of information along the way.
Gotcha.
But, but a teacher's going to want to know whether or not they have to reteach some?
Right, yeah.
Material?
Yeah.
Before four months?
Correct, yeah. So, these testlets that, when we talked about the testlets prior, there is a piece in there where anything that is machine-scorable automatically in 24 hours is scored, and that is released to teachers. So, they can go in and they have a portal that they can view those components. There are some types of questions that have to be manually scored in the testlets. So, I would assume they're taking all of that into consideration when they develop this new assessment in regards to making that more timely feedback for teachers. That's part of their goal, is to give timely feedback to teachers to help them be able to direct their instruction.
And one more question. Do we do the cleanup and send it, or do we just send everything and they do the cleanup?
We do not, yes.
Okay.
We code everything, and then they use all of that coding to help them to determine what's reportable and what's not.
Okay.
Yep. We do have opportunities where there's certain reports that are given to us, and we can look at those, and if we feel like we have different information, that we can go in and clean up those processes, but we usually do such a good job on the front end, we don't have a lot of that. ELA looks a little different, okay? So, for standards in ELA, it's not a discrete set of skills. Students have skills that they're working on all year long, but essentially, the complexity of their text increases as they progress as a, you know, third-grade student or a fourth-grade student. So, they would be taking three different interim assessments, and each time, that text complexity would increase as they move throughout the year, but looking at some of those, those same standards all year long. There are different writing components, and so, we have things like informative writing, expository, and so, there would be places where we would get to select which one of those we would want students to complete based on whatever our local scope and sequence is. And then, again, students would take a summative assessment that would focus on all of those different strands for ELA. I will tell you, in our meeting, when they introduced this to us, there was a lot of questions around the ELA, and there were probably the most unanswered questions in this particular content area. So, more to come there. They've got a lot of work to do in figuring out exactly how this would work. Math is so much more discrete. It's a little easier to kind of wrap your head around and think about those clusters and how those scores would come back. ELA is just a little more, it's a little more complex. So, the timeline for this particular assessment redesign, DUCI received word over the summer that they did receive a grant to help them with the assessment development, so they have begun that process. They will be doing a very small-scale pilot this year. I did ask. We cannot be a part of it. They have some select schools that are currently participating in what's called Success Ready Network, that they're going to partner with those individuals because they are competency-based learning model schools, and so, they want to be able to get their feedback in regards to how this through assessment is working for them and their students. And then, the following year, there would be a large-scale pilot where we would have the opportunity to throw our name out there and participate, which we absolutely will. And then, the following year, again, even larger scale pilot with a rollout for everyone to take that assessment then in '28, '29. So, I fully believe changes are coming. I think these testlets, while they claim are an opportunity, they heard feedback and wanted to give us an opportunity to look at that a little bit different. I think it's their way of kind of testing the waters, functionality within the vendor platform, and letting teachers kind of get a taste of what that would be like, because I think the actual assessment itself will look very similar to that. So, again, we will train all of our teachers on the testlets and roll that out this year and start working with that in preparation for taking our summative assessment at the end of the year.
Don't be disappointed that you're not part of the initial group. I heard that it was only 200 students.
It's not very big, but I am disappointed.
She wanted to do it.
And while I have a question?
Yes.
Concerning the experience of these people that are using the competency-based testing?
Yes.
Because they have the, they have the same issues with ELA testing, so?
Yeah.
What is their experience? I don't know if any of them are presenting at MSBA that we could go listen to, so?
They might be, yeah. I think it's just a different approach, right?
Yeah.
And I, that's a little bit of, I would say, my frustration with the assessment redesign. Every district gives through assessments. I don't know of a district that doesn't. A, a STAR, an NWA, that is a through assessment. Students have an opportunity to assess three times a year at a minimum. We're looking at how they perform on those, and we're seeing how they grow over time. And so, it feels a little bit like we're recreating the wheel here? And not just maybe utilizing some resources that are already out there. The frustrating part is that if you think about, and you guys don't see the day-to-day when it comes to delivering the map assessment that one time, but it is, it's an event. So, make no mistake about it. We began in February with training all of our counselors and administrators who are the test kind of coordinator at their building. There's a whole process to that. Getting all of the students uploaded and coded correctly, accommodations set for students that need those, the schedule changes, the whole two weeks that students are completing those assessments, and that's one time of year. So, if we have to do this three times a year for these different content, I'm just not sure, like, how is that feasible and what does that look like to be able to manage and not take away from instruction time that we need with students as well? Assessments are important, but as a district locally, we already give through assessments, and that helps drive what we're doing. So, that, some ways, this feels redundant to me. I wish that they would do similar to what they've done with reading success plans, where they have put out to vendors, these are the requirements. You have to demonstrate that you can meet these, and then we'll approve you or not, and then districts can choose from that list of approved vendors. I wish they would model it after that, because again, we all have approved vendors that we're using for that purpose. It would be nice if we could use that same approved vendor for the same purpose and then not have duplicate assessments that we're completing with students. Again, assessment is an important part of what we do, but it can kind of become this beast that takes away from the instruction that we provide to students. So, while I understand the motivation for it, I also want to make sure that we're not taking away from instruction time for students. There's a balance there. So, more to come. We will learn and do what we need to do, but more to come.
This is great. One other thing too, just so everybody understands, is listening, the timeframe of when this map testing took place and the timeframe of when our tornado took place?
Yeah, we, like all things, we just, you know, rolled with it and made it work, right?
We did.
And as always, kids and teachers rose to the occasion, and they did well, so.
Because they took it May?
Yeah, we started in April.
April, oh, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
April, what was the date?
Yeah, it was the end of April. So, it was a little bit different for each of our schools. They have a, we have a district window, and then they set their building calendar, so we, everyone had started by the end of April. Yeah, so a few short weeks, a few short weeks after we all transitioned and moved, and so, yeah, we missed some days of instruction, just pivoting and finding new plans and new homes, but, but all in all, our kids did great, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Any other questions about that data?
I do have a comment, question?
Sure.
Request for the reading success plans when the schools come?
Yes.
I would like them to give us a kind of a rehash or update of how that went last year, how kids did, how they improved.
Absolutely, yep.
I would appreciate some of that.
Absolutely, we'll include that.
Thank you.
Okay. No approval needed for that one, so we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the district assessment plan. This one will need your approval at the end. This is one of those required plans as part of our CSIP. This presentation will be a lot quicker. There's not a lot of changes here, so I, this is my fourth year in this position. Each year, I have come to you with our assessment plan, and there have been a few, you know, changes that we have made along the way. Heading into year four, I feel pretty good about where we are with all of our different assessments. So, really, no major changes to this, but we'll just very quickly, for the public's sake, let you know, this district assessment plan, essentially, it outlines all of the different assessments that we include here in the district. Again, as I mentioned, that's a very balanced process. We do have nationwide, statewide, and local assessments that we are either required to give or we require people to give. And then, of course, classroom teachers have classroom assessments that they create as well for the purpose of driving their instruction in the classroom. On a national level, we have NAEP. We have typically been randomly selected every year to participate in NAEP. I think our size of school and demographics just makes us a really great school district to select as part of that process. Last year, we were selected to give all three of these. You may remember, in the spring, the federal government decided that they were no longer going to fund the assessment for the 17-year-olds, and so, we had not yet participated in that one, and it got canceled. To my knowledge and understanding, what I have read is that has not been funded moving forward, and so, I think that one is gone at this point. But we did not get selected to participate in the other areas, and most of the time, we are always notified in the summer if we're going to be a part of that assessment. So, I don't, I think we're off the hook this year. Knock on wood.
One last thing.
Somebody do it quick. For statewide assessments, we've just gone through a lot of the map data, but we do have other state assessments that are requirements for us. The map alternative would be for those students who have some sort of cognitive disability that it's just not appropriate for them to participate in the map. They have an alternative assessment. We have a very small handful of kiddos that that applies to, but we do receive results, and it's definitely administered in a different way for those students. And then, for all of our English language learner kiddos, they take assessments typically in January, February. That's the WIDA access assessment. They are also, if they are new to us, within 30 days of being newly enrolled, they take a screener, which helps kind of guide our decisions in regards to what they would be taking on the access assessment. And then, all kindergarteners are required to participate in the kindergarten observation form. Again, this is measuring readiness for kindergarten, and we do receive points for all of those assessments on our APR report. Local assessments, of course, you all are well aware. We give Renaissance, STAR, reading and math at those different grade-level configurations. We also participate in COGAT, a universal screener for gifted, and we moved that to first grade this past year, and so that we can start those services sooner. Our high school students, as part of that success-ready measure that Dr. Dear mentioned earlier, they take a variety of different assessments, and we have changed how we have done that over the last couple of years. Again, instead of just giving all kids all of these assessments, we try to think about which assessment really meets their needs post-high school and guide them to taking the assessment that makes the most sense for them. So, those are all included in our plan. Any questions about our district assessment plan? There's no, no recommendations for any changes in there. Essentially, it looks the same as what you would have approved at, at last year.
So, just a quick question?
Yes.
I noted on there that if a student takes Algebra I in the eighth grade, then they don't get a end-of-course test because they're not in high school?
They do. So, if they, that's why you see scores for Algebra II. So, if they take Algebra I at eighth grade, when they get to high school, they're still required to have a math EOC. And so, we can decide if that's geometry or Algebra II. Most of our kids take Algebra II. We do have the occasional kiddo that will take geometry, and that's usually because they have started much earlier on an accelerated math path, and they've maybe taken both. It's typically, they've taken all of those assessments before they get to high school, or they may only have one option left available to them. If they've taken everything before they get to high school, we have to fill out a personalized learning plan for those students and say what coursework they would take at high school and what assessment might be associated with that, and submit that to DUCI for approval. So, it could be an ACT score. It could be an advanced placement assessment associated with coursework that they're going to take, but they still have to take some type of assessment.
So, the scores we see though for Algebra I?
Yes.
Are they not, do they, or do they not include the eighth grader?
When you're looking at the eighth grade and those numbers are lower, they do not include the kids who would have taken the EOC. That would be our students that are in the eighth-grade grade-level assessment. Yeah. When you look at that first chart that shows how students performed district-wide, that would include, of course, all the assessments.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Welch? If not, can I get a motion then to approve the '25, '26 district assessment plan?
I'll make that motion to approve the district assessment plan.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's passed. Moving on to comments. Oh, did Marilia?
She had to slip out, looks like.
Oh, okay.
She said she didn't have anything, so.
Oh, okay. All right. Dr. Dear, our superintendent's report?
Well, I have plenty, so.
All right. You'll make up.
I'll make up for it, yeah. Several things to share with you tonight. So, first and foremost, mentioned our most valuable bulldog recognitions earlier. So, that is a process where nominations are gathered from staff and parents, and then we have a committee of staff that make those selections. So, we're, we're not picking them. Our colleagues are picking them. And so, we got to go around to the buildings last Friday and Monday and surprise these folks. And so, for the month of September, I just want to share these with you real quick. And Gina's put, put them out on social media, putting them out on social media. They're, they're staggered, so you can, you can look and catch most of those, but. For our district-wide person, it was Leo Clark in Transportation. For Mark Twain, it was Joe Cross. For Truman, Mark Richmond, who's their head custodian. Wyman, Bill Hinni, who's also their head custodian. Middle School, Matt Campbell, who's a career professional. For Junior High, it was Mariah Webster, special education teacher. For High School, Megan Willie, who does digital productions. Yeah, thank you. And RTIRTC was Logan Carden, who's one of our medical assistant instructors. So, great group for this first month, and I think everybody enjoyed that. So, they got a little, little goody basket and a little thank you card, and so, good, good stuff. We are hosting, at the beginning of December, we're hosting a workshop here at the middle school with the FBI. And so, we've done this before, but this is a local, regional, state, federal law enforcement officials that come in and do the presentation, but it's geared for our area law enforcement and school personnel. So, those are the only people who are allowed to be there, but it's about school safety, things that they're learning from events that are happening across the country and how to better our response and planning processes. So, we're happy to host that. It was a pretty good crowd last time. I'm sure it will, will be again, so. Homecoming. We need to talk about that one a little bit. I'm sure most people have, if you have a student at the high school, you've seen the plans at least, but wanted to share a little bit about what's going on there. We originally had a game scheduled with Springfield Central. They canceled their varsity season, and so, we picked up a make-up game with Lighthouse Christian. I think I'm saying that right? And they had to cancel their season due to injuries. So, we're at the point now in the season where due to misreg- So we're at the point now in the season where, due to MSHA regulations, the regulations are really written to keep people from trying to manipulate district tournament play because of the way the seeding process works for football and all those things. But we're at the point in the season now where Lighthouse Christian will take, will have to forfeit that game, and we take that win, but we can't have another game because it would influence, it would affect those district plays. So we have no ability to schedule another game. It's not an option. So that started us down a long path. We did examine the possibility of seeing if a school could bring a, we played Parkview the week after, we explored bringing them up for a home game here instead of on a wing game. We looked at the possibility of our first round of Week 10 play we will likely host. It's not a guarantee, but we're in pretty good shape to be able to host, that we might be able to do something there, but that's Halloween. That felt pretty gross, try to plan homecoming on Halloween. And so Dr. Ray and Mr. Bridgeman over at the high school brought some of the student leaders in, some of the seniors from the football team, student council members, the homecoming court, and just talked to them about the options. They want to keep homecoming where homecoming is, and they want to do their events, and they wanted to make the best of it that we could. So in doing that, I think we're going to have a great night. We'll recognize the fall sports, have them go down, just say a little bit about the teams, do big waves, whatever. We'll do some highlights from the Alumni Hall of Fame presentations, so that'll probably be scoreboard, digital photos and videos, but we'll acknowledge those folks. We plan to have all our regular student group performances for the choir, band, the cheerleaders, those, those things. The homecoming court activities, of course, where the ladies get escorted out. And then we're going to, we're going to substitute a Powder Puff football game. So we usually have a Powder Puff game, so this will be a little different timing. The, the boys, I think the football boys were the most excited. They're looking forward to sitting in the stands and cheering a little bit, so. But we think it'll be a good night, and we would ask everyone to come out and support the kids and just have a good positive night. That's what we're hoping for. Free admission, we will have concessions available, but we're not going to charge admission. Just come out and support the kids and, and have a good time, so. We hate that there's not a game, but that's where we are, so. Should mention, it's Principals Recognition Month, so if you see any of our building principals, they all do a fantastic job. But I'm going to say more importantly, not in any offense to our principals, but more importantly, today was Custodians Appreciation Day. So we are very fortunate to have good custodians, and they have a, they have a monumental task cleaning up after thousands of kids every day, so we appreciate the work that they do. Also wanted to mention, I know that you all are aware, or some of you are aware, we were invited to participate in the new pilot for the board self-evaluation tool from MSBA. And so would encourage the board to do that if you, if you would so inclined to do that, but we can share some more details about that, and I'll get that information to you. But I think that would be a good opportunity for the board to do that process and kind of see what that looks like. That's all I have.
All right. Any comments from any of the board members? Anything going on anywhere else?
I have just a few things to share. Our Board President Monthly Meeting was on September the 24th. The MSBA is having their new board member training session here in Rolla on November 7th, but I think you've taken care of all of your requirements, right, Larry?
Yes.
With that, so, so that would just be for anybody else that would like to join that. The refresher training will be at the annual conference, but always keep in mind, it's also online, and there are some different options, like you can select APR, sunshine law, confidentiality, so there's some different categories that you can choose from, and that is free. It's part of our MSBA package.
That session, by the way, is on Saturday afternoon, I think, at 2:45 for the refresher training.
The theme of this particular meeting was about communication and the president onboarding program, which that will also be something that will be part of the board workshop that's going to happen at the MSBA conference. Their MSBA is working really hard to put something together, so, and hopefully we'll get that rolled out in months to come. They talked about group chats, no comment on group emails or chats that happen among, when we have a quorum, and to maybe recommend a clause at the end of any type of correspondence that would say, "Do not reply to all," just to avoid any issues with sunshine law. The annual con, as far as the annual conference goes, the app will be available soon. There's going to be over 70 sessions. I don't know if you guys have got a sneak peek, but there is a lot to choose from, and one will be us presenting as well, so that'd be great. There'll be, of course, the delegate assembly, which they'll send out that handbook, that handbook soon.
It's out.
It's out.
Oh, did they already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did they say when your session is?
Yeah, we're at one something on Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Yeah, 1:15, something like that.
1:15 on Saturday?
Whatever that time, whatever that time block is, I forget.
I haven't seen that one. Okay, good deal, thanks. And the legislative update was really just about the foundation formula. They've got a task force that's made up of a variety of people from different backgrounds, and, yeah. So maybe when we have our advocacy dinner meeting, we can talk to legislators and to see if there's been any more activity on that as well. And I'm sure there'll be some sort of update at the MSBA conference too, so. But that's, that's about it.
One, one quick thing I forgot to mention, the parade is still on as well for homecoming. So Thursday night?
And soiree, too.
Six o'clock for the parade, yes. And then Saturday, the soiree on Rolla, yeah, the parade is on Rolla Street, so.
And then tickets are still available to buy for soiree?
Tickets available for the soiree on Saturday.
There we go. All right. Okay, we've got our written reports with attendance, substitute teacher list, financial report, cafeteria report, and then dates upcoming are, remember that our next board meeting will actually be on a Tuesday, which is October the 14th, and then we'll go back to Thursday on November the 13th. Homecoming parade you mentioned, homecoming celebrations, the core stuff, and so. I think that takes care of it. So now can I get a motion to go back into closed session?
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Oh, nope, sorry. How do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
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 Yes. We're in closed session.